Okay, good. Just see, all right, wonderful. All right, well, welcome everyone. Go ahead and call the meeting to order if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President.
Present.
President.
I am here as well. Alrighty. Well, welcome everyone. I was just looking at the attendees, it looks like a small group today, but if you would like to speak to oral communication, something that's not on the agenda, you're able to do that, so just fill out the the Google spreadsheet. Or you could even put it in the chat, we're such a small group and I'll make sure that we address that. And then we have the one item, if you'd like to speak to that, but I don't think we have any speakers tonight so far anyway. All right. Do I have any changes to the agenda? Alrighty. Okay, Janet made a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Mike made a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President.
Hi.
Hi. All right, there is no oral communication. So we are on to the bond program action items.
Hey. Good evening Superintendent Baker, President McAvoy, and members of the board. So here we are before you again. As every six months, we update the board with a formal status and budget report. We are nearing the conclusion of this program. And we are on track for a great outcome. We have had challenges and success. We've learned a lot and have lived in interesting times. And we aren't done yet. There's a lot of, there's a lot of work going on right now and we are spending down the Measure T bond funds. Some of our largest projects began simultaneously and are now nearing completion. Through close management and tight teamwork, we have been able to add projects or scope to our program. The district has had the happy challenge of moving down a list of facilities needs. Our work right now consists of completing several big projects. Initiating and executing smaller projects and managing the closeout of completed projects. Sarah and Will will review our current and planned revenue and expenditures and project status. We will show you a summary of the remaining funds in the program. And the plans for moving down our list of facilities priorities. So we will ask you to act on this budget by approving and adopting at the end of this presentation, should you so choose. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah to discuss the revenue.
Good evening Superintendent Baker, President McAvoy, and all of the trustees and leaders of the district. It's wonderful to be here at the end of this hour or near the end of this program. Will will be showing us the revenue summary. And at the top of this revenue summary, you see the entries that you have seen for years now, they haven't changed. And so we're going to scroll to the bottom of this and show you the changes and the final projected income revenue entries. We still have two, two entries, smallish, from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And Will assures us that he is on those and those people are promising some kind of action soon on that. Then the next thing that has changed since the last time you saw this. And some of you saw it in April and some of you on the bond team saw this in the last several months. But on line 34, there is a new entry for the Q3 actual interest on the bond. And on line 35, there's another actual interest for Q4 on the, on the liquidity that's at the county. Those figures change from last year and so they account for some of the change that will, you will see summarized at the bottom. The projected interest this year will be 375,000, that's down slightly from what we had in in the prior few months. Because the bond is nearing the end and is spending most of the money coming up. The next change that we have in the revenue is on line 40 and line 41. And those are COVID relief funds, there, those were reimbursement funds. And these specific amounts are related to expenditures that were included in the bond that were compensable by the COVID relief fund reimbursement. So those things combined produce a new total revenue of 213,955,172 and 39 cents. That's an increase of 472,325 since the last time you saw this in April. Again, as we near the end of the bond, we don't expect to see very much more in interest. And in fact, the 375 would be some, some kind of conservative estimate of that. So if you, if there are no questions on that, and are there? Hearing none, we will move on to how we're spending the, the revenue.
Hi guys. So this report is, we call our sources and budgets report, it has all of the details of all project budgets. You've got your funding here online, starts on line one. And then our budget start here online for you've got the different projects across the top. We're going to be focused down here on lines 11 through 14. Line 11, these are our new proposed budgets. Line 12 are our last adopted budgets, most recently adopted budgets in, on April 28th of this year. Line 13 changes, changes to the project budgets since the last adoption. And I'll be speaking to the notes on line 14. So our first project will changes our backup generator project. The backup generators were at Clifford, Roy Cloud and Hoover. We are moving $250,000 back to the program contingency due to our bid approach and tight management of the project. So that was good news. Next, I'll speak to Clifford. For Clifford, we're moving $150,000 from the program contingency to the project. Clifford still needs the Kinder Play structure, covered walkway and admin landscaping cleanup. Which are all currently in progress. Next project, I'll speak to Pharaoh. Or the 2950 Pharaoh's Avenue site. This project is complete. We're proposing moving approximately $110,000 to the program contingency. And this is based off the final reconciliation of this project. 909 Roosevelt Avenue site. Project is complete, we're proposing moving $30,000 to the program contingency based on the final reconciliation. Henry Ford. Project is complete. And we need to move $165,000 from the program contingency to the project to cover some flooring issues that came up once the project was complete. Hoover. We're proposing moving 1.12 million dollars from the program contingency. The adds include unapproved potential change orders, path of, the path of travel upgrade project, the asphalt replacement project, the child daycare center fencing project. Additional asphalt, the gym floor robot scrubber, the gym audio system, a new tree planting project with city trees. Allards. Other small projects and some replenishment of the project contingencies. If anyone has questions as I'm going through these projects, please stop me. Next project, our, our tech IT project, we're proposing moving approximately $691,000 from the program contingency to the project. This will cover current and future small IT projects and some additional fiber upgrades we've identified. Kennedy, we're proposing moving $660,000 to the program contingency. We still have the steam classrooms and the garden included in the budget. Both of those are in progress. McKinley. We're proposing moving $2 million back to the program contingency. At the last budget update, we requested this movement, movement from the program contingency to this project to cover the EV bus purchase, but our EV bus vendor has agreed to proceed with delivering the buses and to wait for the grant reimbursement directly from the CEC. That was great news because it frees up the $2, $2 million without us having to wait for the CEC to reimburse.
Will, can I ask real quick, is this, is this part of the AB 41 or is this a different grant opportunity?
This is a different grant opportunity.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, we've been able to take advantage of quite a few different EV grants. And so some came from PG&E, this one has a PG&E component as well as a big CEC component, I think two and a half million.
Yeah, because through the AB, yeah, so that, you know, we've had emails, I've been emailing with Dawn and others, the possibility of additional funds, you know, for EV and some ventilation stuff. That's through the AB 40, 841, I didn't think any of that had been decided this soon, but I just wanted to double check.
It hasn't happened yet and we are, we are looking into that. I'm actually attending another seminar regarding additional EV, potential EV grant funding as well in the coming week. So we're gonna, we're gonna get as much as we can.
Yeah, that's great, I mean, there's a lot of push right now, as everybody knows from the state, to really try to reduce greenhouse crap, gas emissions, particularly with our transportation system, so that's, that's awesome.
Absolutely agree. Our next project, North Star. We're proposing moving approximately $156,000 to the program contingency. The project is complete and that's the final reconciliation of the project. Similar here at a former 815 Allerton Street site, 36, approximately 36K to the program contingency. Project's complete. Final reconciliation of the project. Roosevelt, similarly, 300, proposing moving $350,000 to the program contingency. Project's complete, the final reconciliation of the project. Next, I'll speak to interim housing. We're proposing moving $630,000 from the program contingency to this project based on what we've learned from the portables that we've removed. We've removed a handful of portables, but we still have 18 onsite at Garfield and John Gill. And so based on the costs that we've incurred from the removed portables to date, we were able to calculate and estimate the $630,000 additional, bringing the project budget to $5,830,000 and we believe that that will allow us to remove all of them successfully and close out the interim housing project. Our program administration, we're requesting $700,000 moved from the program contingency to this project to cover additional COVID-19 safety compliance officers. And as you guys know, this is a legal requirement and has helped us to keep all of our construction sites open through the entire COVID process.
Don, can I ask one more question on this one? So I have a question, if, if COVID, if we were not in the COVID world, would have we still had to have these safety compliance officer, are they only because of COVID?
No, only because of COVID, they were require, requirement of the Seminole County Health Department.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, I know we, yeah, boy, that's 20 million bucks, that's a lot of money. I mean, we had to spend it, but it's an interesting amount of money. Wondering, shoot, is there any other stimulus fund somewhere, right? Because we've used more of ours for programmatic things, which I think has made sense. Anyway, I just want to highlight that for us in the community, that that, that wasn't a big extra cost that we did not think we'd have to pay for, right?
So the program administration project is all, includes all of the administration of the entire program.
Okay, thank you, so what's the COVID cost then? Thanks for clarifying that, because 20 million seemed like a lot.
That would be a lot for just the COVID officers, they, they are expensive. We feel that they have added a great value and we're sitting at about, between two and two and a half million total.
Okay, that makes more sense, that's still a lot of extra money we weren't expecting to have to spend, but okay. I put that in perspective, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for asking that question and clarifying. And now to our program contingency. The program contingency is, would, will now be sitting at one point, approximately 1.3 million dollars. Reminder that revenue and project budget changes flow into and out of the program contingency. We still have our initial $4 million board reserve and do not plan to touch that. Which brings us to our program total of 213,955,172, which matches our revenue. Does anyone have any questions before we transition into the future project list discussion? Okay. So here at the bottom in gray are previously approved and funded additional projects.
Will, you'll have to stop sharing and reshare your
Oh, thank you.
Sheet that you're looking at.
Thank you. Okay, can you guys see the potential future project list now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So here at the bottom in gray are previously approved and funded additional projects totaling approximately 9.2 million dollars. This is the list that we'll be discussing tonight. And then this shows the current program contingency total of 1.345 million and some change that matches the number I just showed you on the sources and budgets report. Starting from the top, we'll discuss the Orion Alternative Lunch Shelter Option 1 for the master plan. So this was value engineered out during design when scoping the budget. This option requires significant additional site work and a retaining wall. This would be the lunch shelter down near, just outside of the MUB and, MUB and library area at Orion Alternative. And if we went with this option, the younger students would no longer need to walk up the steep hill with their lunch to the existing lunch shelter. Our high level estimate of this option, $500,000. So there is a second option. Which we're called, we're calling table on umbrellas. So you would remove the existing stage next to the existing lunch shelter. We would repave that area and add additional tables and umbrellas where the stage was. This would be a more affordable option and we're estimating $200,000 for this option. And so this will be the decision that you guys need to make tonight, is whether to go with option one or option two.
So I, I'm sorry, option two, can you just say again where that's located? Is it at the top area, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the top area right outside of the, the old administration, right, right outside of there's the older lunch shelter with the stage right next to it.
So can I ask with option one, the $500,000, you would be adding it down closer to MUB? Would it, would you still keep the lunch area up above as well, so you'd have the two lunch areas?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember, is the upper one, is that one covered?
It is.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
It's an old, it's an older structure. But it is still covered and there are tables under it and then the, the stage right next to it.
And so what is the, so the tables and umbrellas, you would be taking the stage down and just adding extra tables and umbrellas up there?
Correct, yes. Covered lunch shelter with the existing tables, we repaved the area and then install the tables with umbrellas for some additional coverage where the stage was.
Okay. I don't know if we want to talk about this now, but I, I believe the school site had a preference for one of these two, is that correct?
I don't, I don't necessarily know whether they had a preference. I think that they, they definitely talked about option two. Only because we had not discussed option one fully that was in the master plan. So I think what drove option two for the school site was their wanting to get rid of the stage.
Got it, okay. So why, I will, um, just the stage, just because I saw it recently, I don't know how old it is, but it looks like it was from the time that John Gill was a performing arts focused magnet school, which was quite a long time ago.
Correct, that's accurate.
I mean, the one thing I remember about them wanting the lunch shelter near the MUB is there is concern about you've got these little TKK and ones having to walk up and down the hill. And they actually drop their lunches or they skin their knees or whatever, so I guess it would be good, anyway, maybe you guys have clarity from the school site, which they prefer now. Because the last I heard, they really wanted that right outside the MUB, but I haven't talked to them in the last year or so about it.
And then I guess before we move on, I would just ask for a clarif, question. When you said there would be a retaining wall and what else would happen in option one?
I was just mentioning that, that in order to do option one, to install the lunch shelter in that area, it just requires significant site work to clear out and flatten that area and then a retaining wall to, because it's on the hillside, a retaining wall to help hold up the hillside where we would, where we would remove that ground and flatten. I was just mentioning, that's why it's a more expensive option, it requires a lot more site work. Great questions, any other questions about these two options?
Will, I have a question, so with that 500K, that's the most expensive it could be at the high level, right?
That's our high level estimate and, and yes, we believe that we could get it done for a half a million dollars.
Right, the, the thing that I want to bring up to your attention, Dawn's attention and the board's attention. And you know we have this TK planning that's in, in process right now, another plan. I know Liz and I are working on it this week and meeting with the county this week. And it seems like from our conversation with Catherine, that Catherine's site right now, looking at the number of kids that are there, would be one of the sites that would most likely have more than, you know, maybe two TK rooms there, two K classrooms there. With that being said, and knowing you got, you have your K's, your ones, your twos, it may be beneficial to have that lower level acquire the, the lunch shelter, going in that direction, especially for those little guys. So that's information for the board and then information that I wanted to just remind myself that this is a high level, it could be less than 500K. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Becker.
And Will, if I could say, for me, it's also about safety. And if you've been out there at lunchtime, it is really hard for the younger ones to go up that hill and they do drop their food. So I would be inclined to go for option one, not only for equity, but also for the safety of the younger ones, especially if we're going to have the TK little ones out there.
Thank you, Maria. I just wanted to say, you should double check with the site, I mean, it makes sense and maybe we'll be approving the budget amount tonight, but I just would love to hear from the site once to just make sure that that is what they want. As opposed to removing the stage and getting, you know, the lunch up, lunch shelters there, because maybe, maybe that is a higher priority, I, I just don't know. But I mean, it all makes sense what we're saying about wanting the, the lower level lunch shelter. But I'd really like to hear the site input too.
Understood, and thinking on the fly, if you did approve the $500,000 say allowance tonight, then we, you know, we, we could potentially ship with the ratification later. All great comments and questions, thank you guys. Anything else on Orion all lunch shelter? Or move on? Okay, moving on to the Roosevelt slope stabilization. This is to clean up what we refer to as dirt steps next to existing staircase and handrail to avoid use of them as stairs, it's a safety concern, $100,000. Next.
Where is that, is that the really steep steps or where is that?
Correct, correct, that's right, right above the lower playground by the multi-use building.
Okay. And, and can you just, can you say, what is it exactly be doing?
So there's the staircase and the handrail and to the side of the handrail, there's like a, a dirt, what we're calling a dirt staircase, it, it looks like stairs that have been made from people, you know, walking and running up and down. And so we'd be removing and cleaning that up, maybe some light landscaping.
Okay.
Just to get rid of that safety hazard, you know, people tripping or falling down and, and using that side, you know, trying to force people to use the staircase in that steep area.
Okay, yeah, so aesthetically kind of fix it through landscaping and erosion control and stuff, okay, thank you for the detail.
Garfield rear parking lot. So basically, this is needed so that all the staff have parking onsite, it's pretty simple. We have a temporary parking lot back there right now, and the staff are using, and this would be a permanent parking lot along the side of the property line. And I believe we, I believe the schematic design is showing like 30 to 40 additional spots, maybe maybe even more, yeah, 40, so we're at 46 spots, so this will allow all of the Garfield staff to park on site.
So the, the other thing that this does as well, I mean, obviously the parking is critical. I mean, everyone knows how difficult it is to park at Garfield. There's no street parking at all, like Um there's no street parking at all like all of our other sites, so that goes without saying. But what else this helps indirectly is when the field is used. On the weekends or at night, what used to have to happen is used to tromp through the middle of the campus. To get to that field. Well, what this does now is it allows a clear safety. Net going down to this parking lot where they can't get into the campus, but they can get to the field. And have access to the field, because we're gonna put gates back there, we'll we'll, that'll get them into the field. So it's a lot. The site will be a lot more secure on weekends and allow people to use the field.
Thank you, Dawn. Yes, uh in in addition to that, there would be a high fence. Lighting back there as well. So this would be uh, this is, this is related to safety as well. Safety and security, I should say.
So so can you describe where the parking lot would be? Just, I I know the campus, but I'm just trying to visualize it. I haven't been over there since construction began.
So it's in, it's in the, what I would consider the northwest corner by the railroad tracks. So it follows the property line on the uh north side of Garfield, all the way back to the tracks. So basically shrinks the field down a little bit, but they still have a, they still have plenty of room.
So it's kind of where the preschool classrooms?
Yeah, actually, it is a little bit further back.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Next item, next line item, uh multi-use building transfer switches for the trailer generator. At the nine open school sites. Um so I mentioned earlier, um we permanently installed uh three backup generators. Roy Cloud, Clifford and Hoover based on those. Um sites either being the P G N E forced shutdown sites previously, um and then Hoover uh the backup generator. Uh powers the the food service, the food storage, I should say, external food storage. For the nine additional open school sites. We've already purchased a trailer pole generator. Uh these would be transfer switches that we would install at each. Multi-use building, which would allow uh the district to easily connect the existing trailer pole generator. To any of the M U Bs in the case of an emergency power loss.
Uh can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this only covers one site, right? The trailer can only be used at one site or can it be, or do we have more than one?
No, only one.
Okay, my, the the reason I was asking, the question is that recently, there's been a lot of power outages. So if we only have one, what happens to the rest of our sites if they also have a power outage? We can only cover one.
Well, we we can pull the trailer to one, which is typically, I realize that. What we've been seeing lately is is unique um with multiple. But in the case of what we're experiencing right now, we we lost Cloud, we lost Kennedy. Um Cloud is just about done with its generator, so we would have had that one taken care of. And we would have been able to pull over to Kennedy. If by chance there are more. Then in Menlo Park, there's ones where you can rent and you can pull that trailer up to another site and hook it up. Just like we do ours. So the main thing is so you don't have to get into the electrical panel and rewire it. To be able to get that done.
And Maria, that's a great question. Um installing these M U B transfer switches would set you guys up for the future. Um if there was, you know, i- in the future, if you felt you needed additional trailer generators. Um, you know, you guys, you guys would be set up for that.
Okay, great. That was my question. How do we get it ready in case we have money to purchase additional ones in the future? Thank you.
And actually, can I ask another question on this? Um thanks, Maria, for asking that one. I had the same question. And then I was wondering, because I thought the three school sites, Clifford, Roy Cloud and Kennedy. Are the generators only for the kitchen or does it actually work for the whole M U B?
Uh real quick, Roy Cloud and Clifford. Both got backup generators that power the full M U B, because those were the two sites that went down with the P G N E shutdowns. Hoover, um Hoover's backup generator just pow- it's a smaller backup generator permanently installed with the automatic switch over. But it just powers the, I believe, external freezer and refrigerator, so that. If the power went down there.
Right. We have a lot of, lot of food storage over at Hoover. So that's what drove that one.
Okay, so Kennedy actually doesn't have that. It's it's was Hoover, Roy Cloud and Clifford.
I think Dawn was just mentioning that, like today or recently, Roy Cloud and Kennedy were the two.
Right, right.
So, um, option one and option two. Uh option one, the total for the list would be approximately a million dollars. Option two, one point three four million. Both uh would be fully funded by the current program contingency. And. I believe what I heard earlier was that if you approved the five hundred thousand dollar option two. Uh that there would be additional discussions with the site on their preference. Um but I'd like to open it for discussion now. If you guys want to talk about option one and two. Work towards your recommendations.
Hey, hey, Will, it's kind of, kind of obvious what it is, but I don't think you covered the closeout modernization completion scope project.
Thank you, Mike. Um. Line thirty, closeout modernization completion scope. So this is uh ninety thousand dollars that we've requested for small additional scope items needed. Like during or after closeout, um and we'll request that Superintendent Baker and Bomb Program Director Don Diaz can authorize. Uh the use of these funds when needed. Um this is. I mentioned earlier that we uh closed out and reconciled a handful of the projects that are complete. And so, you know, if a gate comes up at one of those sites and we have, you know, the project scrubbed to the penny. We wouldn't need to go to the board and request, you know, five thousand dollars here, move from the program contingency to the projects, you know, ten thousand here, twenty thousand there. Um it would allow us to kind of move and and handle that additional scope as it comes our way. Thank you, Mike. Any questions on that?
Yeah, so so I just had a question. Um I actually think the projects you proposed. Look good and certainly they cover our equity and safety issues that have been really important to this district. Um so I see there's this phase two solar, the nine point three million. So I'm assuming that's just sort of. A leftover from our list and you just want to keep track of that, but we're not talking about funding that tonight, right?
We're not. Um it's the only item left on. The long list that we started with, you know, a couple of years back when we first began um talking about. Program contingency money and committing to new small projects. And so. I believe that the, that the solar project could be a good balancing figure near the end of the program. Um, we still have the four million dollar board reserve untouched. Um if things continue going well and we don't get thrown any. Other curveballs, and you know how many curveballs we've been throwing in this program. Um. We're managing the three big projects, Garfield, Taff and John Gill, very tightly. Um I would love to see, you know. Us come in under budget and have some additional money to move into the program contingency near the end of the program. Uh we plan to do a budget update presentation early twenty twenty two. Once we're getting near the completion of Taff, uh sorry, I I believe I said John Gill or Orion Alternative, Taff. And Garfield. And so, near the end of the program, um if you guys so chose. Whatever money was remaining, you could commit to a solar project, because uh solar projects are special in that you can size them to the amount of money you have. Um and you can release an R F P that demands no change order, so the contractor has to commit to. Providing X X amount of solar for X amount of dollars. So it could be a good way to end of the program if you guys so chose. And if other priorities don't come up between now and then. But it's.
But we also have potential, we also have, and we're hoping for another round of uh uh Prop thirty nine type funding. Uh that got us the phones for Selby Clifford Roosevelt and the D O. So we're hoping for that as well, so.
Yeah, thanks. So so that was sort of where I was going with my question is. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have another list of any other projects. I I I feel like we have been going through a lot of them. So these are sort of the ones that were left or the ones that have come up. And then the only sort of left one is solar, what you've said. Okay.
Right. And other ones do come up as we're, you know, as we're going down our path. There's other ones that do pop up as well.
But Elisa, yeah, what what you just said is something for your district to celebrate, the fact that you have gone down your list and. Uh you know, that's the only thing that we're still in discussion about at the moment.
Right. And I do feel like in solar, I think there will be some additional state funding coming up in the next couple of years.
Crossing our fingers. Um we check in with our energy consultants and. Study it regularly. Um there's no guarantees yet, but everyone has their fingers crossed and the way things are going. Um so I would, I would hope that some additional uh energy or solar type funding uh comes our way before the end of the program.
Well, the other things on your list seem more immediate, you know, from a safety standpoint and things. So anyway, do. May have questions or comments. I I know Janet and Mike, they get the the benefit of being in the committee, so you guys. Get a lot more details than the rest of us. So thank you for bearing with me on all my questions.
Absolutely, yeah. No, please, please ask questions, um clarifications. That's why we're here.
So I do actually have a question. Um with, um if we went with option one for Orion. With how much uh excavation has already been done on that campus? Do we feel like we already know what we would uncover? In excavating there? We're not gonna run into any.
No, we do. We know.
Yeah, we.
We're work.
Okay. And so that's factored into the five hundred thousand.
Any other question?
Okay, so to uh to summarize, we're asking the board for three things. Uh number one is to approve the proposed budgets. Um number two is to give us direction on the future projects. And number three is to authorize the use of up to ninety thousand dollars in budget movements. From program contingency to specific projects. And that would be Dr. Baker and myself. To approve those um cumulative smaller projects. To uh prevent from having to uh go back to the board every time. Now, obviously, it's gonna come back under ratification. So so all that happens still. It's just that. Until you see the site use the campus, sometimes things. You know, they don't come up, they don't uh rear their head until later on. So that's what this is about. Well, we have to scrub the budget, we have to turn it over based on the auditors to complete the project, so they're telling us to complete it. So we can't leave it open, but yet there might be other small projects that we need to do, and that's what this one's about. And so, um. As far as the conclusions, um you know, Robert City School looks and and functions better. Due to these years of effort working on our facilities. We are proud to support the mission of learning. And teaching. We are grateful to the district leadership, to the community. And to our team for the focus and hard work to produce this success. The whole team is still fully engaged in completing this program. And we ask that you, the board. District leaders and our schools' community to stay with us as we first finish all current projects. And then move into closeout of the program. So thank you.
Thank you, Dawn and Will and Sarah. Appreciate all the information. So just to clarify then, do you want um three separate actions? Or do you just want one action? I think. Um so what I heard is, we saw the first, we saw the revenue of the budget, we saw the expenses and some of the. Request to move program contingencies one way or the other for the different projects that were described, to finish out those projects. Then we have this new list that we're being asked to take action on. Was there anything else?
That was.
Kind of the budget in the proposed list?
That was it. And the the one decision uh would be between option one, option two, or the hybrid that we discussed of approving. A five hundred thousand dollar allowance and then talking to the site.
Okay. All right, so um so would you like two different motions or what do you, what would, what are you asking for?
Um I think you guys need to decide on option one, option two, or the hybrid uh allowance. And then, once you make your decision, it would be approval on everything.
Okay, great. All right. Well, I think what I heard um in various ways is that it seemed like most people were comfortable with the. Approving up to five hundred thousand and then going back to the site and asking them what their preferences, given the new information that Dr. Baker talked about tonight, as well as. What we've heard. So I think um that's sort of what I heard, but a board member should feel free to make whatever motion they want.
Well, that that that's how I felt. I thought that was a good one. Also, on on these projects, just, you know, most of them just need to be done, like this particularly, like. Pa- parking at Garfield seem like that that's just something that that has to be there or there. You know, they maximize existing investment, right, with the transfer um uh the transfer switches. Um I do like the ninety thousand, Dawn, you'd ask for the program contingency there, because there are a lot of places where we just want that polish. To make it really look like this is an excellent environment for kids to learn and having that, having that money held aside and being able to get to it. Makes a lot of sense to me, and that's in, that's in both options. But since you called it out as a third one, I just wanted to say that. And then uh. In terms of improving the budget, I mean, it's so clear. Well, you did a great job of presenting it tonight. It was really easy to see where the money was moving and why. Um and uh I know maybe that's because we've gone through it in committee before, so I already knew coming in, but. But it seemed really, I hopefully the other board members felt the same way, but I thought it was really easy to follow which. Which projects are getting what money and where and what's getting returned to contingency um that made it a lot easier to sort of navigate these through. Now, I realize I'm at the end of the program, so I have all the benefit of all the years of work that went into this to get to this point, but. But I I couldn't let that go without saying, so.
Very much appreciated.
So I'll just say, um first of all, it's a great job and it's really exciting that we've come back a second time to approve. Um further projects. I think that speaks a lot to how well this program has been managed. Um and I think if we're talking about the two Orion options, um. You know, for a long time, I'd been leaning towards the tables and umbrellas, because that was a lot easier, but I think for the long term benefit of the the campus. You know, in twenty years, I don't want them sitting back going, for three hundred thousand dollars more, why didn't you guys make this easier on our little guys? Um so I would be fully in favor of the five hundred thousand, um uh assuming that's what the the site still wants to do.
And I I'm also in favor of option two. And um Dawn and the team, you guys have done a tremendous job as usual. I see the improvements all around and I'm just so grateful that you guys have. Been able to maximize every dollar and just uh made our campuses look wonderful and improved. Each and every day. So thank you so much for all your hard work and uh for doing what you do best.
Thank you, Maria. I I believe you meant to say option one, the five hundred thousand, right?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Well, it's kind of confusing, because it is option one, but if you look at the two columns, it's in.
It's option two.
Yeah, I don't know which one I was referring to, but I meant the one, right, yeah, okay, option.
That's what it's be, yeah.
Oh, good, yeah.
Okay, option one, yeah.
Yes, I guess we're still just commenting before we take emotions. That's good. So you go ahead if you'd like to say something.
Yeah, so same here for option.
Yeah, so same here for option one for Orion. Um, again, I'm looking at it on the safety side. If the school ends up deciding on something else, that's fine, but again, for the safety of the little ones, that would be great. Um, and then what I do want to say, like everyone has said it, is a big thank you to the entire bond team. Um, from the voters to you guys as a team, to the board members that sit on the committee, to the district administration that helps out. Um, you guys have a terrific team. You guys always work so diligently. Talk about budget. I know at one point in one of our meetings, Sarah was talking about down to the, was it a penny or a dollar? So I do appreciate your transparency and definitely your time management for all of our projects. I think Rowan City, um, it's great because of people like you guys, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Cecilia, and we are proud of having the program balance the penny.
We are. That's pretty awesome. I mean, we know that there's been other districts that have had issues with the budgets and everything, so. Yes, Cecilia, you did a nice job saying how, you know, such a big team effort, so thank you. Um, so I just kind of revised my statement, you know, I I actually am, my preference would also be the option one, actually. Mostly because I've just heard over the years that the little kids, it is tough for them to go up and down the hill, and like Maria said, I've seen it myself. So the only thing I would say is it's really, unless the site has some reason why, they'd prefer the pears and I mean, the umbrellas and tables up top, I too would prefer option one, I think. So I don't know how we want to do this, if we want to, um, you know. Dr. Baker, I don't know how, you know, recently you've talked to them or what you're thinking. Make the decision, or if we do go back to the site and ask them.
I think they're going to want option one, uh, and talking with Catherine. I'll be meeting with Catherine again. Not to, yeah, tomorrow. I meet with her tomorrow afternoon, so I can reen- reengage with her about that and what she's been hearing from her parent community. But that all along, I believe it was that they wanted the lunch shelter, and then now that Catherine is thinking that she can take additional TK classrooms at her school site, moving forward with the TK program that's coming down the pike from the state. Uh, I think it would be very beneficial to have that lunch shelter down there.
Also, if you think about a rainy day or something, it could still go out and not get all wet going up to the shelf, right?
Right, right.
Yeah. Alright, any other comments before we um, move into action? Alright, you guys did a great job explaining everything. You made it really easy for us to um, have a conversation and make decisions tonight. Alright, so do I have a motion to move forward, given everything you've said? I mean, like, what you've heard from everybody?
I'll make a motion.
What's the motion, Cecilia?
To approve, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have the actual recommendation to approve the, um, hold on one second.
I think it's the option one we were talking about.
Okay. So to approve option one of the Orion Alternative Lunch Shelter.
Yeah, the the whole list, in other words, an option one. Is that right?
Sure, yes. Yes, I understand what you're saying. And everything else listed on the Mesher T-Bond Program Potential Future Project List.
Great.
Now I would second that.
And that's the budget as well, just to be clear. We're approving the budget in this action as well. Is that right?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a a motion and a second, and the motion from Cecilia was to approve option one and the potential future, future project list, and also the budget as presented earlier. So the whole thing. Okay, and then we have a second for Maria. Terrific, yeah, I think it's good just to get clarity, because it is a lot of money. We want to make sure it's clear, but we're approving, so great. Alright, um, roll call vote, please.
Kristy Wells.
Aye.
Kristy Lawson.
Aye.
Kristy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz Locum.
Aye.
President Nakvill.
Aye. Alright. Good job, bond team. Thank you so much. And it looks like we're on to adjourn.
Just before you adjourn, just an announcement for the Kennedy parents, power is back on. I just got a text, power is back on.
I got a text from a friend, too.
Um, is the Roy Cloud back on now?
Oh, yeah, it went on at one o'clock. It came on at about one o'clock.
Okay, good, good. Glad to hear that.
Oh, I could sleep tonight.
Alright, that's great. Okay, so we can adjourn in honor of uh, having power back at our schools. How about that?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mike and Maria, and all those in favor. Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to see you, Sarah. You're kind of a special guest here.
Thanks, Brett. Always good to see all of you. Thank you.
Alright, good night, everyone.
Good night.